Y'all know a little bit about that with the emails? It's about the potholes, the big holes on Henkel Drive that is kind of sinking in front of Lambert's Body Shop. And that big hole that's right in front of Phillip 66. I think y'all had some dealings with that several years ago. So it's got to where now. I'm pretty sure that Terry Abinethy City Attorney sent y'all an email on this. We do need to seek out a little bit more advanced knowledge on this. So I'm asking your permission tomorrow night to retain an engineer. I was thinking Alton Heathcote, it is an emergency situation, so we need to kind of do that. Heathcote and Davis, if, he's already an engineer at S U D. So he's already pretty familiar with our area. So he would be good to just give us some advice. And I think we need to be trustworthy.
And you spoke with him about that, didn't you?
Mm-hmm, and he's gave me all the information and stuff. But of course, I have to, you know, get y'all's blessing to do that, to get engineer. Is that something that we can put on an agenda to vote on tomorrow night?
Yes ma'am.
That needs to be addressed A S A P.
When that email was sent?
When that email was sent? Not really. I think Terry, right here, it looks like maybe March the thirty first was one. Might have, he might have involved, let's see. I don't know, you'd have to look back. I'll look back, but if they didn't send it, I'll re-send it to all of y'all. So you can look at it before tomorrow night, just to make sure. Did anybody else not get the email? No, nobody got the email at all? Okay, alright, well, I'm sure that you did. And then maybe I'll probably already know a little bit about it anyway. It was, I think y'all had to fix the road, maybe four years back. Alright, next thing, I don't think Jim's here. Ordinance to rezone the Knotts property from R three to M one, since I guess that didn't go through. We'll put that on the agenda. Back to commercial, is that correct?
Yes, go ahead.
Okay, making sure. Okay, the next one would be codes that need to be adopted for state fire marshal office. This is kind of something that's already, should have been done a while back. But Jim said he brought it to several, I don't know if he said a year or months, I don't really know now. But anyway, we're going to put that on there, and that'll be the first reading. Next is a building inspector job. You have several people that has sent your emails, and y'all all did get those emails, correct? The ones through the, okay. You have actually Brandon Vaughn here to speak to y'all tonight. He just wants to introduce himself, you should have his email. I'll send that to you. Brandon, do you want to, where is Brandon? Do you want to come out up and introduce yourself, or stand out there? You don't have to.
Hey, I'm Brandon Vaughn. I'm from Middleton, thirty-five years old. My wife and I recently purchased land out on Sulphur Springs Road. It was her grandparents' land, and we were fortunate enough to be able to buy it. We're hoping in the near future to be able to build out there. And we look forward to being a part of the community of Selma. I worked at a plant in Carville for thirteen and a half years. I decided it just wasn't, wasn't for me anymore. So I branched out and went into H V A C and electrical work. And I did that for a couple of years. And then, so I have a little bit of experience with the H V A C and electrical side of things, and a little bit of plumbing, but not enough to actually do it justice yet. But I'm willing to learn, and I would like the opportunity to, you know, branch out and go into something different. I'm looking for more of a career position instead of just a job. And I feel like this would be a, a good step in a career direction. I, I served on Middleton's volunteer fire department for about ten years. And then the plant that I worked at had a volunteer fire brigade within the plant. And I served on it for about twelve years. But I guess that's, that's all I really know to say. I just appreciate the opportunity for y'all to look at my resume and consider me.
Do y'all have any questions for me?
Thank you.
Thank you. I'm not sure, Parker? I haven't got to meet Parker, so I'm sorry.
Yes ma'am, I'm here.
Y'all should have that, he just brought that today, so it should be in your pile already.
I hope y'all all have got my resume.
They do, they have it.
But anyhow, I'm from Oliver Branch, Mississippi, recently moved to Selmer. And I've been in real estate for twenty years, graduated Mississippi State in ninety-four. And, you know, I've been around home inspectors, I've worked for builders, five or six in DeSota County, which is fastest growing county in the state of Mississippi. But the, I know a lot about what we're looking for as far as structure, things that go on in the house, ground up. I'm not a professional in that business, I look to learn to do that. My mother's still a real estate agent. I got out because of, people ask me all the time, why you got out? It's a lot of stress and where I live. And when the market crashed in '81, I, I had to make a change of scenery. So I work, and here in Selmer right now. But, you know, I want something permanent. I've been around government pretty much my whole life, there in the city of Oliver Branch and around there. But I'm willing and knowingly about slabs and about concrete and about roofs. I've worked, I've sold roofs, I've done a lot of things when that market crashed. So been around the foreclosure market and all that good stuff. I know it's not good stuff, it was bad stuff for me and my family. I have three small kids, now there, two of them are grown, college graduates. And my daughter's in a martial academy in Holly Springs, but I live and reside in Selmer. I'm welcome to any questions that you might ask me. I've dealt with so many people over the years. I'm a people person, I have a marketing major. I know how to sell myself, sell a city. And I guess that's about all I got. If y'all got questions, then let me know.
Y'all have any thoughts on any of those that's on there? Number seven has just decided to check them out.
We got Mr. Teague here.
Oh yeah, Mr. Teague spoke last time, but yeah.
Oh, did?
You may just speak again.
I wasn't here.
I'm sorry, go ahead.
But yeah, I'm Chris Teague. Spoke to some of y'all last time, and some of the guys, some of y'all know me, and some of you don't. I served with Johnny Norris for twenty years, I guess, and he probably knows me best. But I'm a carpenter now, just walked in from remodeling Chapel Bridge next door there. So I made it to the meeting. But my, my, I'm working on a, since nineteen eighty-five, I've been working on a college degree. I finally like one more class of getting her done. But I know we've got to come up with a lot of training certificates in schools. And if you, if you look through the resumes, it's just countless, countless schools. I'm pretty good at it, not as dumb as I act sometimes. But, so I, I can come up with those things. You send me, and I'll come back with it. And I've got good experience over, over the years. A lot, a lot of people know me, I'm from here, I grew up here, raised my boys here. And I'd appreciate any opportunity, if y'all have any questions, fire away. Hopefully, hopefully y'all will consider me. And I think, I think I'd do a good job, y'all.
Thank you, thank you, Chris. Baby, did you know I'm frozen?
They all know me. Well, I've been here since.
Okay, I just, sorry, I missed you back there. Y'all have any thoughts on that or anything?
Now, we've got to vote tomorrow night, right?
Well, I was thinking, what do y'all think?
No, you need to create a committee, and then you need to narrow it down to two or three, and then interview is what you need to do.
Well, I'm trying to get to it.
That's what I'm asking.
Yeah, find out how we gonna do this.
We need mayor, a couple aldermen, and maybe a couple of department heads to go through that's going to what we do.
Okay, but he's leaving the seventeenth, or twenty-seventh. So when we gonna do this?
Need to form a committee.
You want to leave?
I don't know, I mean, I'm fine being on it. Find another alderman, mayor, and.
I don't mind being on it.
I'd be happy to be on.
Robert Anthony, since he deals with some of the codes and stuff, and then whoever else.
Jim still be on there?
Yeah, Jim can be on, yeah.
Okay, so there's your committee?
Yeah.
Yeah, I was just thinking we was, it's all rushing in and leaving.
Yeah.
And he got to have some training, and he got to come in, and he leaves.
What you do is you narrow it down to probably three names, and then interview them. And then go from there. Bring the recommendation to the board.
So we're going to interview them again?
Yeah, like an extensive interview.
Okay, well then I'll get, I'll get that done, and I'll get that out to you in a minute. Or maybe tonight. Alright, next is a Selmer Elementary School tornado shelter. Y'all did get that out of your email?
Yes.
I didn't get an email, but I got the paperwork.
What do you think about that?
I think it's fair.
You think it's fair?
I read the whole contract, I think it's good. It makes perfect sense.
The contract from the school, or the contract from what Terry had sent?
No, whatever you gave me that, in the packet from last month.
But I mean, did you get the questions at the school?
I didn't see that. All I got is this.
Well, it's in highlighted, I just give you that, just because it's got highlighted questions in there. Looking at it. And Ms. Pence and Principal Bo is the one that decided maybe we needed to talk about it a little more before we went through that resolution and passed it. Which we know who will, well, I'm going to let Chief Carr talk about it a little bit more, because I made him go out there with me, so I would understand a little better. So go ahead, Chief Carr.
I sent this agreement to M T A S, the fire consultant, Donald looked at it. He says it looks good to him. And he sent, he replied back in an email that the city of Ripley, Lauderdale County, has kind of the same, similar thing to this. Well, I got to talk to Chief Worrles. And what he told me, the county wanted the city of Ripley to enter into an agreement like this, but they didn't. They finally come to an agreement with the principal at the high school. And what he says they do is normally the fire department will open it up, they'll do a walkthrough. Normally, the police chief, when something happens, he's there, and Tim's already talked about it. He'll try to pop in and out, and then they'll let the policeman pop in and out. But when we've got emergency calls going on, it's just about impossible for us to sit down there and monitor. They do let animals in, they're on leash, the people have to clean up after their pets. It's more or less a gentleman's agreement, but the only one the mayor has gave you all is who will open and manage the entrance? Who will do the check-in or sign-in shoes? Who will be responsible for overseeing the shelter while it's open? Who is liable in the event of the incident in Mary County through the city of Selmer? Are pets allowed? What are the regulations for pets? Who will police the area, close the windows, and secure it? Now, Michelle said one of the problems that they had, because it was kind of a trial run. They had some teachers there, but they let a few people from the public in. She said they was opening the window shutters, they was opening the doors. Well, you just might as well be outside when, when they do that. That's some questions to be answered. You know, really, the only thing in my mind, and I've talked to Harold Frankie about it, we can get it on. As far as having somebody sit down there, we can't do that. They throw that idea of maybe getting school resource officer, we might have to pay them a little. It was just some ideas stowed out. But the way, the way Ripley does it, they unlock it. And the police tries to do walkthroughs when they can. And he said, we've not had no problem out of it. He said the other night when the storm came through, they had over two hundred, and it didn't happen. So the agreement looks good, and I've not gave it to Sam to forward it on, but I don't think there's going to be a problem there. Because my, the mayor and myself met with Michelle, and they, they come up with these other questions. And I do have a thing from Harden County. Now, the one thing, Harden County, their rules, no livestock. Pants must be in kennels.
You can't bring your pet goat with you.
Well, it says goats, but anyway. Pants must be in kennels, bring paper towels and plastic bags in case of accidents. No food or glass will be permitted in the building. Water bottles and small backpacks with personal items, and no firearms and knives permitted on the property. That's how Harden County has their rules for their shelter.
But I did go to Terry Abinethy and take this to him, that's what I thought maybe he sent it out to y'all, because, you know, he got back with Craig to ask him, you know, I guess his, our thing is, are we going to be willing to pay somebody to go in there and do all this policing like this? Is what I'm asking of us. I mean, I didn't think anything was bad about what was presented at the first time, the resolution or whatever. But I just was thinking, after Michelle and Principal Bo come up with these questions, what, what do y'all think?
Another thing to keep in mind, this shelter is only going to be available in schools, not in, going on, or a van or something like that. And I did, Greg, Martin did write me a letter or something, and I sent it on to T A M A. I hadn't sure he'd write one. And state Tennessee has approved our storm shelter and the generators, but now they're at F A M A. I think we'll get them, but even if we was getting worried tomorrow, we're looking sixteen miles from it, we'll have that thing built.
With everything happened, everybody's real scared. We want to be ready for everybody to be safe.
What does the county do with like when they open the courthouse? Who's there?
We don't have anybody there, the police opens that.
We just go and lock the basement door.
We did that, and then that's it. And they go back and re-lock. Everything clears out. I guess seventy-five to eighty people can get down there and.
Probably, about the same with community center. And here's your two things about it. Courthouse and community center, they're not the same with rated storm shelters. They're built, but they're really not true storm shelters.
I was wondering about what kind of, if there was any agreement, y'all are unlocking the door, but we're not doing anything there, but.
We just unlock the door, because we have a key.
Just unlock it and then go. So, I don't know, I just, Michelle wanted to bring this up.
We'll need to work it out with them, and figure, see what they really want.
I think they'd want us to provide a person, that's what they really want. And I think a couple of officers come.
So who's willing to expect two o'clock in the morning?
I don't know.
That's, I mean, the firemen, if there is a storm.
I think, I think it goes back like the other night. If there's just a warning and nothing happens, locking the door, people walking through is, is fine. But if something happens, even an S R O, the S R Os were out the other night. In the damage, assessing things, trying to help people, you're not even going to have them to be sitting at a shelter if you do have a, something happened like that happened the other night. I think it just depends on the given situation. If it's just a warning to where people are scared, to where they can be there, we have more resources compared to something actually happening.
So I guess we got to give this a little bit my thought, am I right?
If it's okay, I'm going to go ahead and send this agreement to Sam, and let him send it to P E P, which is our interest to look it up. See if they've got any concerns. I don't think they'll be in, but we'll go ahead and get that much done, and then we need to decide on this other.
On the agenda tomorrow, vote on Veterans Day Parade on November the eleventh, I'll have that on there. Any thoughts on the tennis court? Is that still something that y'all would like to still do? Or is that, I mean, voting for yes on that, or?
I think we need to get the North Park finished first, and then we can move on with tennis courts.
Can I speak on that just a moment?
Sure.
After the, the last work session, and Mayor Emma McPriss that she wanted to do the tennis courts and all, I received a email from the state health department, state of Tennessee health department, that they had opened the healthy built environment grant again. There has to be a letter of intent in by May the first. And I brought everybody a copy. The last time that the tennis courts were done was in twenty fifteen. So we, I mean, it, it is time for them to be done again. That's eight years, that's about what you're going to get. But this is the healthy built environment grant, it's eighty-five thousand dollars. We can apply for it, there's no match. So this would be something that we could do, and I'll be glad to work with the lady, help him get it done. Get the letter in for it. We, we've gotten this grant before, we got it for, for the Florence Avenue playground. And so, you know, we know that it's a good grant, it, it can be used for this, because it's, the, the tennis courts are multi-used through the schools and the community. So it would be something that we could do. As I put in my report today, if we did something like this, that we might, we would even have extra money, that we could put benches, you know, for the players on the inside, maybe some benches on the outside for the fans. So that's something that we could, could look into. And there's also the, the Blue Cross Blue Shield Healthy Grant that they have, that they will help you do tennis courts, if we want to look at that one. But I knew this one, this one is coming out really soon, because you have to have that letter of intent in by May the first.
What's the match, you know?
There's no match.
So it's a hundred percent?
Hundred percent, eighty-five thousand.
That sounds good. So.
See if we can get that before it's been done.
Do you want me to work on that, or do you want to send that to Melissa?
We'll, we'll, we'll talk about that. But yes, we're definitely going to do that, thank you. Okay, that's a good. Okay, next is the ambulance service. Chief Carr, do you want to put that, or is that something?
The.
Did y'all, y'all got that in your last pack?
The, the county has asked Adamsville and Selmer to partner with them. If you read Tennessee state statute, it's plain as day that the county is responsible for providing an ambulance service. My recommendation that if the city partners with the county, that we get some kind of contract, that we will at least maintain one ambulance in Selmer twenty-four seven. And I think that's what Adamsville's going to do if they do it. But basically, it's, it's up to the county to provide an ambulance service.
Two hundred and nineteen, two seventy-five, but we're only supposed to be responsible for thirty-seven thousand, five hundred and twenty-four.
Has it all been provided by the county before? This is the first time they're asking for.
Well, the county's been getting it for free, but now, because of the fuel, wear and tear and everything, you know, Benton County pays seven hundred and fifty thousand dollars a year.
Did you mention it was from West Tennessee?
Yeah, yeah, Old Iron County pays one point two million. This is just the start of it, every year, they're going to go up. That's my only thing, though, that I recommend, if we partner, we're a stakeholder in it, we should be guaranteed at least one ambulance in the town.
Well, if you look at it, we pay city taxes and counting, and it's like.
That's, that's.
Yeah, somebody else is doing that. That's the big issue you get with that.
That's what we said the last time.
Yeah, so if you get to that, just like Anthony said, we better get some benefit out of that.
Right, I, I know, I agree, I just don't.
How much has Adamsville got to pay?
Nineteen thousand, thirty-eight. Leaves the county with one sixty-two, seven thirteen. Forgot till budget to, to, so I guess I have to worry about besides that now. And then you got on there, next is the speed bump issue, Mr. Williams will be here tomorrow about that.
Do you, you know Terry got any research from that?
I, I.
Ain't nothing really?
I mean, would you want to say something more to it or not?
Well, I, I remember vaguely when this came up, it, it came up. We had stop signs out there at Faust, and we had put them stop signs out there, and people were running the stop signs. And that, you had that hill coming up out there, and people were running the stop signs. And there was a wreck, a wreck out there. So we put the speed bump up to help entice people to stop at the stop sign. So I think that's the reason the speed bump was put there.
Safety issue.
It was a safety issue. Now, I understand where he's coming from, you know, just tearing my car up at the speed bump. But if you stop at the stop sign, you're rolling over the speed bump. So I guess you got two different points of view on the speed bump being in the middle of the road. But it is at a stop sign. But that's the reason it was put there, because you're coming over a hill, the other people are coming up the hill. And if you run that stop sign, you're not going to see the people, because you're cresting a hill.
Well, I ride up here to this new park we got by the townhouse, and if there's anybody that needs a speed bump, you need one there where the kids, it's about fifteen kids over playing on day. And then my wife rode through there, and signs, nothing, they come flying down through there. So it is.
You got the crosswalk, but no, right?
You got the crosswalk, but they, they ain't worrying about no crosswalk.
And that's really the issue that pertains is, and it's always been my opinion that, you know, if you, if, if you talk to the mayor, you talk to myself, I mean, everybody and their brother wants speed bumps. It's just, you know, molly drive, just what pops into my mind. I spoke to a lady two weeks ago, you know, we got to do something. It's posted sign, it's got a speed limit there. The answer's not speed bumps, the answer, and, and I'm not saying, you know, you'd have to have a lot of people to post on every road. But, you know, we'd be having speed bumps everywhere, just to satisfy all the people that are asking for.
But I know the other one was about a child about to get run over. There was a whole pile of them up there, could have got run over. Because they was leaving and run across there, and they just flew right in front of.
And the mayor talked to me the other day about, you know, Sixth Street during church services kind of thing. You know, it's just, you know, we have crosswalks, we have signs, people, you know, stopping people in crosswalks. You know, you can put up all the signs in the world you want, but people, the more you put up, the less they pay attention to them. The codes need to be enforced, what we have existing already. Because.
Thank you, ma'am.
No, that's not, don't get me wrong, that's not what I'm saying.
Come out of first five, because it was, it was very bad.
That's certainly not what I'm saying, but, but if you start to succumb to speed bumps, they'll be everywhere. When you got one here, I'd like them here. When you've got one here, I'd like them here.
Here's something, it's probably gonna be a Terry Matthew question. There was a child hit on a bicycle, that was the reason that speed bump.
Oh, that Clay Hill?
Yeah.
Yes.
So we take the speed bump up, we put it down for a safety reason, well, we take it up, and then we have accidents, somebody gets hurt, what's that gonna do? Well, you had it fixed, but you done away with it.
Well, maybe he'll be prepared tomorrow, because he's got the emails, so. That answers.
And that was the reason, wh- the, what was given when we put that speed bump up? Is that a child on a bicycle got hit and, uh, so.
Just tell him it's gotta stay, and it's gonna be there.
What about like at the playground, if we had a couple rumble strips? And just make them aware when they go over, and it's not the speed bump to tear the car up, but, you know, you go over, you know.
Yeah.
Would that help to make them aware, and how does that fit in legally?
I think they know what they doing, the rumpa things, I don't, they know they speeding, they know the stop sign there. They know the kids is over playing, they just don't care. It's, it's a hard situation there. I don't think the little rumpa thing gonna stop them, the way they flying.
Or speed bump either one?
Probably not, they probably jump it, but at least we can say we done something.
Next is the, uh, I guess we're voting tomorrow on Willis Lawn Service, do we need to vote on that tomorrow? As a general.
John and Johnny, do y'all need a packet?
I, I got that, don't we?
I do.
You didn't get one, John?
No, well, I did.
You should've got one in your.
I did.
I know, you did.
My wife too.
Oh, okay.
No, me neither.
We won't say that we're lying.
No, my, my damn wife too, the wife.
Oh.
Okay.
She did it so much, I don't know.
Next is Angie Dayton, the audit.
Yeah, I actually have five things, I'll do them real quick. Uh, the first thing is Ted had asked me several months ago, you know, we had talked about the Nixle thing, and, and he got some information. Um, we had intended to mention it last week, he got a, um, proposal for us to, um, to come on. Everbridge bought Nixle, so it's all the same people, but he got the information for it, and for them to give us, um, the type of, um, program that we need. And I think this weekend would, is a perfect example of how it would have been very helpful. Um, but anyway, for, is it Everbridge? The, for, the contract for one year is thirty-one ninety-six eighty, and he wanted to, wanted to try to get that on the agenda to discuss whether or not we, we sign on with Nixle for a year, uh, so that he can use it, and, and utility.
That's three thousand, right?
Yes, three thousand, one hundred and ninety-six dollars and eighty cents.
I was wondering, was that thirty-one thousand?
No, 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 three thousand, one hundred and ninety-six dollars and eighty cents.
And everybody can use a great utility.
Police and utility, whoever, the city, the whole city can be using it, so, um, that's the, the first thing. The second thing is the, um, if you remember back in December, January, we agreed, we went with Magellan, the lady that was on the screen, um, that, that became effective April one, so it is available. Um, and I'm, they are sending out a packet of pamphlets and all kinds of little happy's and stuff for our employees, so that, you know, I, I think, like with Stacy and the state, they get little magnets, or they'll get key, I don't know, just all, any kind of happy's just to, so that people have the information about the things that are, uh, available to them. But if you remember, uh, and, and I don't know when, I'm assuming that they're probably gonna come to City Hall, so expect the box. I don't know when they, she said she ordered it, that's all I know. Um, but, um, in order to get that initial orientation training for free, we have to do that training within ninety days. So I, we need to, and, and I wanna, we need to figure out where we wanna do it, do we wanna do it? Do we want a live person? You know, that, just, I, I think we need to kind of just, what, what, what we wanna do. And, um, and I think the option of a webinar versus a real person, both options are there, whichever one we want, and, um, and then kind of an idea of when. One of the questions that I have sent to her, um, and haven't gotten the answer back yet, is, because it says, are you going to record this, yes or no? And I hadn't, I thought, well, no, but then I kept thinking, that's something that would be very helpful for, if, if they do allow us to record it, so that when we have new employees coming in, we can share that with them, so that they, they get the same information. But I do know that on a monthly basis, um, they will, they, I mean, they're gonna send out lots and lots of information, and, um, and we need to figure out if, if, how we're gonna share it with our employees. Because there's a lot of stuff, it's not just, um, crisis. I mean, it's, it's everything from legal to financial budgeting, to suicide, to, um, I mean, just e- everything. Workplace craziness, um, you know, everything. So all these different options, I mean, I got, I got a, a bundle the other day of just little email, uh, flyers of all the different things that they offer services for. And it is for all of our employees, but it's also for everybody in their household. And, um, and so, um, and it's, and it's free and anonymous. So I want to, I wanna get with you, Sherry, about when we can set up a training, and where we wanna do it, if we wanna have it at the utility in the conference room, or if we wanna do it, I don't know. Where are we gonna do it in a big enough place, and, and if they will do it, you know, twice in one day, or once one day and one the next day, so that we can get everybody. And then also, if we can get it recorded, so that the ones that can't come. So anyway, that, that stuff, all that stuff is rolling.
If you're doing a webinar, you might be able to do it at two locations at the same time, do it there, do it here.
Yeah, that's, yeah.
Yeah.
All that stuff.
Well, but, I mean, a webinar, you know, it's like death by PowerPoint, you know.
Maybe, maybe a live person on the other end, but it's not here.
Yeah, and I think that's what it is, it's a live event.
Yeah.
Yeah, it's a live event.
Okay.
Not a recorded video, but.
No.
Nobody's gonna watch it.
Right.
You watched your training, didn't you?
Yeah.
I did.
Okay. All right, the third thing I've got, and she's got a copy, did you make them a copy? Or, I didn't, sorry. Um, the contract with the auditors, um, is up, or, um, we got to do, you got a copy, right?
I got this.
This is that, and then two other things. Um, the, the, uh, the audit, if you look on page three of the audit packet, don't look at that first page yet, that's next copy. Look at the, the, the second section is the contract with the auditors. Um, that contract, the only thing that has changed is the fact that, if you look on page three of the contract, there is, uh, a new change that the State Comptroller's Office has mandated that, um, all cities convert their charter accounts into the state's, um, standardized charter accounts. And that's something they've been trying to do for years, but have, has, have, they've caught flack from all the cities, because it's, every, every city uses a different charter account. Um, and so what they have decided is, okay, we're gonna make you do it, but we're gonna make your auditors do it for you. And so, um, so the, the extra on the, the contract, the only change in the contract is the two thousand dollars, where they are going to manage that transition of the, the standardized charter accounts, where they take what we have and put it into what the ci- the state wants. Um, but we do need to get this, the state held up, you know, normally this would have been passed back in December, January, February, you know, but the state just now released, um, on Friday, the template for the con- the auditors to use. And then, um, I got that email from the comptroller today. Um, and so, um, and, and I've already gotten two emails from the comptroller saying, you need to hurry up and get this taken care of. Well, I mean, they just sent it. Yes, so what I need, yeah, that's what I want, is just for us to accept that contract, um, from the auditor. The other thing that I have to do in the month of April is get on the Treasury's website and update our spending plan for ARPA, and that's that front page that I gave you. The, the first column on there is the original, that, well, the total dedication is that one point two million and change. The first column on there is the, um, the, the, what we had originally sent in to the, um, this Treasury Department last year as our plan. Um, and then the second column is what we have spent to date. What I need to know is how to proceed with this, um, when I do April. Do I include the police renovation, and, and do we need to rearrange some of the numbers? Uh, I know that we had initially said the street sanitation building was forty thousand, but I'm guessing that's a low number.
But it is.
Uh, but then also, I know that six hundred and twenty is a high number. So I may, you know, it may be a situation where the police building number comes down, and then we increase the, but other than that, do y'all agree with everything else on there? Um, okay, so I can go with that, I, I just need, I just have to submit it or, or update it. And it's one of those things that it takes, I mean, it, it's just a plan, uh, as, you know, as long as we show what we're planning on doing. And, um, I've got, they got to do this update, I printed it off, it's a hundred and fifty pages on how to do this. So I'm hoping it's a whole lot of stuff that would be used, it's more complicated for like Memphis and something like that, and pretty simple for us. I haven't, I haven't looked at it yet. Uh, but I do know that I needed to know how we would proceed, so, you know, so I would need to increase the amount on the street sanitation building. And I think you had gotten one, you'd gotten a thing?
Yes, I, I did get one, um, design build was out the.
Design team?
Design team, um, was out the second day after the meeting of two months ago.
So I'll get those numbers from you?
Yeah.
Okay, all right, so we'll just do it kind of an adjustment on those two things. But basically, the, the, the standard, whatever, we're still good with, correct? Okay. Um, all right, that's that. Okay, so the last thing that I had given you, if you look on this page, this one color, I want you. And I, this is one hundred percent preliminary, nothing at all even looked at hard. This is just preliminary. The only numbers on here that are actual are the two thousand and twenty-two actual numbers. Um, and this is straight off of the audit. And what I wanted you to look at is the three boxes at the bottom. The twenty twenty-two, and the, the, those first two years where you go, well, all three of these years, it's all a timing thing with grants. Um, that, that seven hundred and forty-five thousand, if you take out the expenses of the North Park and then the, the ARPA, the actual loss was only the three seventy-four. But then if you look at twenty twenty-three, it shows, you know, that most likely you're gonna have a, a surplus of five hundred and forty-eight, but if you take out the two grants that we are getting in, that we have gotten in twenty twenty-three, it's really, um, the four hundred and fifty-one loss. And then in twenty twenty-four, the numbers that I've got on here in twenty twenty-four, um, you're gonna have ARPA spending, um, that's gonna offset from that previous year. Um, and if, it, all three of those, if you wash it out, it's gonna be like that seventy-four thousand. So from one year, from twenty twenty-three through twenty twenty-four, the difference in the fund balance is only a hundred and twenty-one thousand dollars. My point is, that hundred and twenty-one, that hundred and twenty-one thousand dollar, uh, reduction in fund balance, uh, in this twenty twenty-four budget has zero raises for anybody.
I noticed that.
Yeah, and that's my point, I want you to see that. That the, in years past, up until now, there has always been buffer in the budget between revenues and expenditures. That buffer's gone, it's gone. There is no extra funding, um, for anything. Anything that you do now is gonna be a hundred percent, going to be a reduction in your fund balance. That's where I want you to know we are. I am not anti-races, I think, I, I, I fight for my employees. But what I'm telling you is, this is reality, and unless there is an increase in revenue, you cannot continue to increase your expenses. That's just, one plus one is two, it just is not going to happen. So for every dollar raise for any individual that you give, it's about twenty-four hundred dollars. So just understand what you're talking about, or a dollar is twenty-four hundred dollars per year. Um, so, I am all for us figuring out how to find, uh, revenue stream. Um, this right here is a, a flat budget for twenty twenty-four. The only thing that is extra in that is the fact that we would have ARPA spending, but like I said, down there at the bottom, if you take the ARPA spending out, you're s- on a flat budget. And these are not, those revenue numbers are not understated. Those are accurate numbers based on history. So, um, if you are going to do anything, well, first of all, you're already, that seventy-four thousand is without any raises. So, um, one thing that I, that, um, that is gonna save us some money this year, about sixty thousand dollars, and it's, it is already built into this, is the fact that our TCRS, um, in- investments are doing awesome. They're doing great. Uh, and so, um, if you remember several years ago, our rate was seventeen, a mandate that we paid seventeen percent. It got knocked way down, and we, we put it to twelve, and then we put it back down to eleven. Right now, we can actually put ours down to about eight percent and still be overfunded, you know, and pa- and everything's, uh, in good shape. Uh, that helped about sixty thousand dollars. Um, but that sixty thousand dollars is already in this, that, that, uh, project. So, my point is, I am all for giving raises, I just don't know where you're gonna pay for it.
What do you suggest?
I am not the one that's gonna make that suggestion. That is not my job, I just give you the numbers.
Well, can you share your thoughts about what we might be?
You know where your revenue streams are.
So does that mean raises is froze until you come up with more revenue?
That is not my decision.
Increase taxes is the only way to.
The only way you're gonna do it is.
That's what I wanted to hear, and I know nobody else is gonna wanna hear it, and.
Well, I'm just saying, that's just reality.
When last time?
What did the world food cost, ever cost, ever?
I know, when last time we had one? Not that I want one, but when we had?
I have no idea.
Oh, four?
I don't know.
Seventeen years?
Yeah, so I'm just saying, we can't continue raising our expenses, and I think we need to raise our expenses.
We do, 'cause we losing people all the time.
I agree, I just don't know how we're gonna pay for the raised expenses. So, that, this right here is one hundred percent preliminary, it is just the, 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 you know, um, this is where we stand. Um, nothing on here is set in stone, it can all be tweaked, but you, you can't quit giving, you can't quit, quit providing services, and if you are wanting to do something for your employees, it ain't there right now, and we need to find it. And that's, I just want that, because I know we, you know, we will, next month's meeting, we can have a detailed budget with input of what we wanna do and, and how we wanna do it, um, or options, because I know with us, when we vote on it in June and June, that gives us a little extra time. You know, we don't have to vote on it in May. Um, we vote on it, you know, first, it's first part of June and then the end, end of June. So, just throwing that out there, planting the seed, y'all can decide what you wanna do, I just wanted you to see where you are.
I think if you clear with people and let them know why you doing this, and don't be hiding no hidden things.
Yeah, you gotta show the benefit.
You got to show the benefit, but you come up with, we gonna do this, and then you see some money shift over here, and it's a bunch of BS, and then people's upset. So as long as you honest with them, I think they'll.
This is where we are, this is where we stand.
They'll be better able to accept it.
Right, and, and in twenty twenty-four, you know, the, the, like I said, the, the only big thing in it is the ARPA spending, and it would be, you know, and that's what that other sheet was, other than tho- those things, um, that's it. But, but I mean, in order to, I mean, expenses for everything are going up, and so if you're. But, but I mean, in order to, I mean, expenses for everything are going up, and so if you're going to continue, and, and our revenues are not, other than our sales tax, but like I said, these sales tax numbers reflect what is actually going on. You know, it's not, those are not understated numbers. Um, I just, you know, it is what it is, we just need to, I just had to put it out there for y'all to think about. And that's all I have. Let's do it then.
Anything else? Jessica, wanted to talk about Rockabilly?
Yes. Um, good afternoon, all good men, amen. Um, I'm Jessica, the executive director of Chamber of Commerce and Tourism, if you don't know me. Um, we have been making plans for Rockabilly Holly Revival for twenty twenty-three, it's always the second weekend in June. Um, we have talked about safety plans since the end of last year on the event, and we have met with Callie Allison, director of Car Parking Center, who does the car show, and, um, we are hoping that you will be willing to work with us and help us with blocking the streets again this year and continuing the event. Yeah.
Yeah.
We're just gonna change one thing on the plan. It's under problem, I'll try.
Cars getting...
Yep.
And that, that is like best, sir, our number one thing that we've been working on for a year, so. But if y'all are good to go, we're ready to book bands and start advertising, if that's okay.
Yes, ma'am.
Okay, thank you.
Anything?
I got a question.
Okay, yes, sir.
The street that goes out from the school, over Mulberry, all the potholes out there, do they belong to the city or do they belong to the Mexican restaurant?
Oh, that's...
I understand that's a dedicated street through there.
Hmm.
They getting worse. It's good speed bumps, though, we take two of them moving through.
Yeah, we can even there.
My hole, this...
You're talking about in between the schools? Should be a street.
Well, they're actually close, right, close to Mulberry, they run off Mulberry, you know, they're cars, school buses go out there, and cars go through there, and a whole deal.
It's in the park, I think that's in the park.
Yeah, that's where that old motel was.
That's a dedicated street, I understand, it goes through there.
Well, we will check on that, so the potholes?
I don't ever remember it coming up as a dedicated street. It's an, it's an access into the, the school building, yes, but if that's a dedicated street, um, they've got...
I'm not sure, I was told it was.
Yeah, well, I mean, people can tell you anything.
Well, I was, I, I learned that long.
If that's a dedicated street, they have no business blocking it off when their traffic is done, um, will need to...
It's a more like, sometimes.
Right. Yeah, they do quite often.
Well, they can do what others don't.
Well, it's their private property, I would think, that, uh, that's theirs.
I'll check on it.
What's that?
I'll check on it.
Yeah, just a question, I'm just...
Yeah.
I'll get deeper.
Thank you, we've got lots of time. All right, anything else, then, maybe we start?
Anna and Em was up just to go in there to get a room, 'cause I seen Johnny there been, where? Down that private street he told you about. You didn't see me?